Welcome you to the May twentieth Blue Springs City Council Meeting. If you would stand with me, we're gonna have an invocation by Pastor Chris Abel from First United Methodist, and then Councilmember Culpeper is gonna read us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you pray with me? God, first, let me say thank you that we're able to gather here today as a community and as leaders. In the scriptures, you've said that people of faith should pray for their political leaders, and so I will want to take a moment, pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, this assembled council. God, I'm asking that you grant them a few things. Wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. A sense of welfare and true needs of our people. A keen thirst for justice and rightness. Confidence in what's good and right. And God, especially in these times, an ability to work together in harmony, even when there's honest disagreement. Especially when it comes to chickens. And I pray for the agenda set before them today. We pray that the work before them should wisely benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Blue Springs. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can be seated. We will call the meeting to order and start with the confirmation of a quorum.
Councilmember Kayler is absent. Councilmember Fowler?
Present.
Erickson?
Present.
Edmondson?
Here.
Culpeper?
Here.
Mayor Levisay?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that a roll call? Roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpeper?
Aye.
Mayor Levisay?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
All right, next on the, on the agenda is a public hearing. Well, no, that one was withdrawn. Don't have any action for item number four, withdrawn by the applicant, the Adams Ridge. Item number five was continued by the applicant to June third, so I need a motion to continue item number five.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for R.D. Mize Road annexation.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four with the following attachments. Site location maps, petition of voluntary annexation with attachments, affidavit of publication and the examiner on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, one hundred and eighty-five foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, and bill approving annexation. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Staff, if you want to be sworn in for the public hearing.
Do you some of the testimony you're about to give in this case, could you refer yourself back?
I do.
All right, thank you very much. Dave McCumber, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city.
Before you this evening is a request to approve an annexation of approximately eighteen point four seven acres into the city. The property is owned by the applicant's Judy D. Smith, Bruce M. Bellington Trust, and Bellington Larry D. Estate, and is located at twenty-nine, six oh seven R.D. Mize Road. The request is for the public hearing and first reading of the bill for the proposed annexation. The second reading is scheduled for June third, two thousand twenty-four. And the property is currently undeveloped, heavily wooded, and adjacent to the Amazon Distribution Center, Adams Point Village, and the Adams Point Golf Course. The annexation petition was received on March twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, or I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-four, and the initial public hearing is occurring within the state statutes required sixty days. Staff believes that the proposed annexation meets the general criteria for annexations as outlined under Missouri Revised Statutes seventy-one point zero one-two, that the property is contiguous and compact to the existing corporate limits of the city, that the annexation is reasonable and necessary to the proper development of the city, and the city is able to furnish normal municipal services to said area within a reasonable time after annexation. Staff recommends approval of the annexation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. I know the applicant is here, but is just available for questions. I guess first questions are staff. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. I see the site there, immediately to the west of that is like a triangle. Is that owned by a different landowner? No opportunity to get that in at the same time?
So that property is already in the city?
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Did I get your question, Councilmember Fowler?
Yep.
Okay, like I said, I know the applicant is here, but they're just available for questions. Are any questions for the applicant? Okay, then we'll go to the audience. Anybody in the audience want to speak in support of? Support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? Any other comments from council? We will close the public hearing. Next is introduction reading, uh, first reading only of Bill fifty-two thirteen.
I will introduce it.
First reading of Bill five-two-one-three, an ordinance annexing eighteen point four seven plus or minus acres of property located at two-nine-six-oh-seven R.D. Mize Road to the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading only tonight, with a second coming at our next council meeting.
All right, is there a second on first reading only?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing for FIC-FRDC General Development Plan. Clerk will read the items. Go ahead.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information forms dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four with the following attachments. Staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication, the examiner on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, one hundred and eighty-five foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinance by reference, and twenty-fourteen Conference of Plan by reference, bill approving General Development Plan, and bill approving Final Plat. This is all we have to enter for the record.
So there might be several speakers on this one. If everyone wants to stand that's gonna speak on this item and be sworn in, we could do you all at once. So if you're planning to speak on this, go ahead and stand, and he will swear again.
Me too.
All right, thank you. Staff, go ahead.
Adair Bright, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in. The next items on the agenda this evening are requests for a General Development Plan and a Final Plat for FIC-FRDC, a proposed testing facility at twenty-nine fifty-one Northwest Seven Highway. The current property includes one parcel and approximately seven point nine four acres, and is zoned heavy industrial. The first request includes a General Development Plan to allow for the construction of an approximately forty-two thousand square foot testing facility for FIC. There is one proposed access point off of Northwest Seven Highway, and there will be a five-foot wide ADA compliance sidewalk along Northwest Seven Highway, as shown on the plans. The proposed land use is industry general, which is allowed by right in the heavy industrial zoning district. Under the general industrial building type standards, all standards have been met in regards to setbacks, height, and building coverage. Parking requirements have been met. The land use requires that parking not exceed one space per one thousand square feet, which would be forty-one point seven spaces. The applicant is proposing forty-six spaces, which is in compliance with the UDC, since they are allowed a maximum of a hundred and twenty-five percent of the required stalls. Bicycle parking has been provided and meets the UDC. Pedestrian access requirements have been met. All sidewalks adjacent to parking with vehicle over a hang are required to be eight feet wide, and a five-foot wide sidewalk has also been provided to connect the primary entrance to the public sidewalk. A final landscape plan has been provided and meets all UDC requirements. There are two buildings being proposed in total, a primary building and an accessory building located at the rear of the lot. The main building includes height and color variations to break up the building. Overhead doors are located on the north, south, and east sides of the building, and the accessory building is, again, not visible from public right-of-way. The outdoor lighting will be reviewed with the building permit, and all roof-mounted and ground-mounted equipment must be completely screened, and that will also be reviewed with the building permit. The second request is for approval of a Final Plat, which includes one lot on seven point nine four acres. Planning Commission held a public hearing on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, where zero spoken favor and two spoken opposition. Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval of both the General Development Plan and the Final Plat. Staff reviewed the General Development Plan and the Final Plat under the criteria outlined in the staff report, and based on this review criteria, staff recommends approval of the General Development Plan with one condition, and approval of the Final Plat with four conditions, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff from the council? Okay. I believe the applicant is present. Do you have a presentation to make, or just available for questions?
Available.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant from the council? Okay, then we will go, go ahead, Councilmember Fowler.
I guess, uh, this will be, uh, looks like it's bringing some employment, just wondering how many jobs will be generated from this?
None at this time.
If you'll come up to, you, you've been sworn in, but we still need your name and address for the record.
Uh, Jeremy Hall, uh, address twenty-nine forty South Jackson Drive, Independence, Missouri. And thi- this won't be creating any jobs, this is just enhancing, uh, current operations.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we will go to the public. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Support of? Okay, anyone want to speak in opposition to? Opposition to? Council, any further comments before we close the public hearing? Councilmember Erickson?
Just have a quick question of the applicant. I was at the Planning Commission as the liaise on from the council last week. There were some comments from the public, and I think you responded to those about the cleanup to the, I guess, to the north of the property, and I drove by there, and it looked, I think you said last week it was active, and it looked like it was active. Is that, I did not get a chance to go by there in the last couple days. Is that still being done, and?
Don't need to state my name.
Nope, you already got you on the record.
Uh, yeah, it's actively going. We've got all the, the brush ground, uh, mounted, you know, mounted up, cleaned up. Uh, lots of site cleanup going. The rock crusher comes tomorrow, and we'll be crushing up all the rock and continuing on until it's done, clean, and mowable.
Well, thank you. You said that on Monday, and it went by. I think it was Wednesday, and it looked like it was really active, so, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? We will close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Sir, we can, it's unofficially back open. Come on. Are you in favor of or opposition to?
Uh, favor of.
Okay, give us your name and your address for the record.
John Sheehy, twenty-five, one oh one East Strode Road, Blue Springs, Mo. Um, I, and I decided to speak since, uh, he made this comment, because I was here last week, and I wanted to confirm that they did a lot of cleanup, um, and it looked great. I knew they were, they had that kinda in the works, but this past week, they've done an awful lot. And I know we're just talking about Lot One, but Lot Number Two and Lot Number Three uh, need cleanup as well from the previous venture. And I would just hope that that continues, and I'm sure it will. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. All right, I guess I need to give a final call for comments. Any other comments from the council or the audience? Now we will close the public hearing. Next is introduction reading of fifty-two fourteen, the General Development Plan.
I will introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill five-two-one-four, an ordinance approving the General Development Plan for FIC-FRDC at two-nine-five-one Northwest Seven Highway.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Second reading of Bill five-two-one-four, an ordinance approving the General Development Plan for FIC-FRDC at two-nine-five-one Northwest Seven Highway.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpeper?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Levisay?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two, I'm sorry, five-three-two-seven.
Next item is introduction reading of fifty-two fifteen, the Final Plat for FIC-FRDC.
I will introduce it.
First reading of Bill five-two-one-five, an ordinance approving the Final Plat for FIC-FRDC, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Second reading of Bill five-two-one-five, an ordinance approving the Final Plat for FIC-FRDC, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpeper?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mayor Levisay?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-three-two-eight.
Okay, next item is the second reading of an annexation from last council meeting, Bill fifty-two oh eight for Adams Dairy Parkway right-of-way annexation.
Second reading of Bill five-two-zero-eight, an ordinance, ordinance annexing one point one-three plus or minus acres of property consisting entirely of Adams Dairy Parkway right-of-way north of Wyatt Road to the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is a roll call.
Councilmember Culpeper?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Levisay?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-three-two-nine.
Next item is introduction reading of fifty-two sixteen, a special election for the issuance of general obligation bonds.
I will introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill five-two-one-six, an ordinance calling a special election for the issuance of general obligation bonds in the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion from the council? Down your way. Okay, Councilmember Fowler?
Um, I guess if staff just wants to kinda communicate a little bit about the structure, what this looks like, and then, uh, maybe I've got a, a comment at the end of it, but let's hear a little bit from staff.
Sure. Uh, the proposal, um, for the ballot issue is to maintain the city's, uh, debt property tax levy at fifteen cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for the term of these bonds, up to the issuance of forty million dollars for the projects that are listed. I didn't pull that up in front of me, the projects that are listed on the ballot issue. Um, we, the city has done this in recent times, in nineteen ninety, in two thousand eight, and then this year. Um, when the revenues for the bonds start to exceed the debt service payments, then we start to take a look at the structure of the revenues to determine if we could, um, issue additional bonds and maintain the same debt service levy to get some additional projects done. And so that's what this proposal does.
Okay, Councilmember Fowler?
And, uh, I think, I remember Mayor Grounds back in the nineteen nineties. That, that levy was fifteen cents back then, and it's been that clear to today, and if this was to pass, it would be that way ten years from now. So the only thing, if it would fail, then we wouldn't have that fifteen cents anymore, debt service.
That's correct, and the two amounts that are listed, um, or that were discussed for bond issue, the debt service levy alone would issue about twenty million dollars worth of, of bonds, and we are also considering, um, dedicating the marijuana sales tax for the repayment of these bonds to, which gets our estimate up closer to thirty million for bonds.
Okay, and then also, the projects listed here, although they don't all say it, but they are, I'm gonna say ninety percent of this money is going towards street improvements, right?
Yes, the, um, ballot issue has to only be on one subject matter, so all of the projects included in here have to have the same type of project, and they are all street projects.
Okay.
Even, even the downtown has to be street projects as well.
Okay, good.
Any other discussion, comments from the council? I've got it. Councilmember Erickson?
Could you, uh, explain one more time to me, maybe to the public, be- because the marijuana tax is coming in, and does that, how does that affect us at the end of the day? Does that mean we can retire things quicker because it comes in?
What we are proposing is to allow, using that revenue to allow the issuance of more bonds, so that we can get more projects done and more, um, revenues available to repay the bonds.
What yet is the estimated amount per year of marijuana tax?
Um, we put in the budget, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that's just an estimate because we don't know. So this proposal was built on three hundred thousand, because we started to see that come in a little bit higher than our projections, but the final number for the year could be higher than that.
Okay, thank you.
And Your Honor, I guess one more thi-
Councilmember Fowler?
It does say special election, but really that just means it's gonna be at the August election, right? August primary?
That's correct.
I've got a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Second reading.
Second reading of Bill five-two-one-six, an ordinance calling a special election for the issuance of general obligation bonds in the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpeper?
Aye.
Mayor Levisay?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-three-three-zero.
All right, for visitors' comments, I have a speaker appearance forum. I see him in the audience there, Mr. Preston Smith. You've got three minutes to tell us your thoughts on the bond election.
Well, do, well, thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to say I think it's disrespectful of the citizens to require them to speak at the very end of your agenda. I think it discourages people from coming to your council meetings, and I think it also, uh, discourages them from offering any kind of input. So if you truly care about what the citizens think, I think you might want to move the public comment to the first of your agenda. All right, about the bond initiative, uh, you've just approved, uh, as it matters at this point, what I have to say. But the streets of, uh, Blue Springs, they are in bad shape. They need, they do need to be improved, but there's no disputing any of that. But I think this has been a hand-to-be-handled process that you've used to approve the ballot measure, and, uh, I just don't agree with the way it's been used. You had a special council meeting last week where there was no public comment permitted. In this meeting, you've not offered any public comment either before your vote, and somehow you expect the people of Blue Springs to get behind this ballot measure. This doesn't make sense. There's nobody in Jackson County who despises taxes more than I do, and I'm gonna tell you something I've not said before. If we have any hopes at all of fixing our streets, this bond you've approved is not going to be enough. There needs to be a tax increase where perhaps three or four times more money is collected. It would need to be in the short term, say, completed within five years. I'd recommend that there be some kind of strict accountability in that, uh, how you spend the money, especially if, if you say you're gonna do it, something, you do it, since it's pretty clear in the last decade, that's really not happened. Uh, the streets have deteriorated, and you've found other ways to spend the money. The ballot language should require an annual review of the process and the progress, and if the city's not making any serious progress, I'd recommend the tax end. What you voted on tonight and approved is just a Band-Aid over a deep wound. You know it will do virtually nothing to fix the streets. Right now, they're in such poor condition, and there may not be enough, enough money to fund half those projects you've outlined. You've essentially chosen the safe route. We are past the point of just nibbling around the edges that's going to fix the problem, and I think that all of you need to step up and take responsibility for ignoring the streets of the last ten years, and explain to the people what happened to the streets. I've lived here thirty years. I can't believe how the streets went downhill. You need to apologize and tell the people that you're gonna do better. If you continue on this path that you're on, disrespecting the voters and cramming this on the ballot just as fast as you can, this measure is likely to go down. And, uh, I just ask you to reconsider your vote tonight. Step back and try to make another run at this and do something bigger and better. I think you should take some time, get some public input about this process, and go ahead and put it on the November ballot and beyond. Thus fix the streets and make our city what it used to be. Finally, I believe firmly that if we tell the people of Blue Springs the truth, explain the problem with complete and unbiased information, and ask them to get behind a tax increase, I think they'll do it, and we rebuild our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I don't have any other speaker appearance forums. Has anybody else in the audience had any comments? Okay. Then we allow for council member comments. Any council members have anything to add this evening? I've got several, but Councilmember Edmondson?
Well, I'm sure you probably got the list of it, but, uh, we did have a soft opening, so to speak, of our Aquatic Center, and I participated in that probably way too much, but, uh, I was talking with Councilman Erickson, and he made the comment, and I wanted to at least bring it forward. The, uh, once you move back all the construction equipment, once you take the fence down, and once you get the grass down and stuff, that place is huge, and it's beautiful, and it is fun. So I just wanted to make that comment.
I think you tried every water slide there was.
I did.
Are you feeling sore at all this week?
Nope.
Okay, I was, so, uh, you're much better shape than I am.
I've been working out a lot at the field house.
At the field house, that's right. All right, any other comments? Councilmember Fowler?
I guess on the special election, uh, the city does have a commitment to be, uh, city staff neutral in this, but however, we, the city does, is committed to educating the voters on what this is. And I can tell you from the nineteen nineties with Greg Grounds and, and, uh, the two thousand eight, everything that the city put down as objectives to get done, got done.
You did.
And I believe that the same thing would happen, uh, if this were to pass, so.
And additionally, we're only allowed to spend the money on what's in the ballot language.
Right.
You can't, there's no other projects that can be spent money on.
Yep.
Councilmember Culpeper?
I just think it's very important to note that this is to put it on the ballot. This is not the council making up this decision that the city must go forward with. This is so that the people, the residents in our community have their say and can express their yays or nays on what this bond is about.
Any other comments? Well, I've got a couple of things. Uh, first of all, this week, all three high schools had their commencement celebrations. So even though the school district is much bigger than the city of Blue Springs, all three high schools are in the city limits of Blue Springs, so congratulations to all those students. Uh, also significant, Thursday is the last day of school, but Thursday is also the dedication of the Carson Ross Community Recreation Complex, the CR-CRC. So four-thirty on Thursday, we'll have a big party to celebrate and dedicate the complex and open Blue Surf Bay officially. There'll be tours of the facility. I have until seven o'clock, so staff, correct me if that's wrong. Uh, till seven PM, they'll be doing public tours of the facility, and then Friday morning, the indoor pool will open up Friday, uh, five AM, five fifteen, and then at noon on Friday, the outdoor pool will open. So that's exciting for everybody, so come out and enjoy that. Uh, also this week is the National Public Works Week. I see Tom over there, so, uh, if you want your toilet to flush, and you want clean water, and, uh, these guys are out in the freezing cold, plowing snow, and out in a hundred degrees, pat, patching potholes, and so we, they much, uh, uh, enjoy our appreciation and deserve our appreciation, so Tom, if you can communicate that from the council for all their hard work. Um, I guess you Parks guys need a better lobby, because we had a police week last week, and we had, uh, financing clerks the week before that. You don't have a week, uh, Mr. Parks Director, so. We'll got to figure that out, yeah. Uh, also, before our next council meeting is Memorial Day. Next Monday is Memorial Day, so, uh, this is an opportunity to recognize people that have fallen in the line of duty, so different from Veterans Day and Armed Forces Day, so if you're not at the lake, if you don't have a friend with a boat and a lake house, then Monday at nine AM, there is a parade that starts just up the street here at Eleventh and Main, uh, walks down Main Street, down to, I think, Meyer Funeral Home, and then down Walnut to the funeral, or to the cemetery. So I'm told that's at nine AM is when they're meeting, and the parade kicks off at nine-thirty. So if you're a veteran or a active military, you can walk in the parade, or if you just want to join them and walk. Uh, my understanding, that's been going on since World War Two, so I don't know. Uh, we have a Memorial Day parade every, every Memorial Day, so you can come out and join that as well. So those are the announcements I have. If there's nothing else, then, uh, oh, I do have something else. Thank you, Miss City Clerk. She doesn't know it, but I have a pen for Cheryl Morgan, who's hiding down there in the corner. Cheryl has worked here for fifteen years officially, and so I have a pen to, uh, give to her. If we can give her a round of applause.
What are we supposed to get out of the way? You ready for? Better not, right?
All right, I think Cheryl deserves one more round of applause for putting up with us. We know we could not do it without you, Cheryl, so, everybody knows that. Uh, with that, then, we have a motion for executive session.
So moved.
Mayor, motion is ordered for the council to go into closed second session pursuant to section six-ten point zero-two-one, sub-paragraph two, revised statutes of Missouri for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel, including real estate, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed are taken during the closed session remain closed, and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, this is roll call. Roll call.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpeper?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Levisay?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we will head into executive session. All right, we will head into executive session.